Good morning, we're meeting in the water. Instead of having a prayer this morning, I know many of you probably have read in the newspaper or in other media outlets.
Is he on?
I'm sorry.
It's not on. I've read in many, I'm sorry, good morning. Most of you have probably read in the newspaper or in other media outlets. A good friend of the college, a student, a former student of the college, Brittany Gordon, and also her father, who is Assistant Chief of Police, Senator Gordon, who's been a friend to the college and the community. His daughter was killed, Brittany was killed in Afghanistan, serving her country on Saturday. So instead of having a prayer this morning, why don't we just take a moment of silence for, for Private Brittany Gordon this morning? Thank you. We'll have the pledge.
.......................................................................................
Resolutions and retirements. Do we have, we'll take the motion afterwards. That's fine, Dr. Law. We have one?
Cecilia Abrahamson.
Oh, Cecilia.
There she is. Walked in with Cecilia this morning. Look at all these friends. Cecilia Abrahamson began her career at St. Petersburg College as a Kelly girl, working in microfilm and student records at Central Records. With her excellent performance as a temporary employee, she became a full-time staff assistant in 1996. And whereas Cecilia has provided excellent customer service, primarily in the area of receiving, imaging, and maintaining the permanent records of thousands of St. Petersburg College students over the years. And whereas Cecilia has worked meticulously, exhibiting profound patience, professionalism, and attention to detail in meeting college benchmarks and standards for maintaining the integrity of student records. And whereas Cecilia is recognized by her coworkers as dedicated, dependable, always smiling, always helpful, and willing to work in the spirit of cooperation and camaraderie. And whereas Cecilia has wished every happiness in her retirement, as she spends much deserved quality time with her family, friends, and church family. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and to the community by Cecilia Abrahamson, and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, the 16th day of October 2012. Congratulations.
(applause).
Your friends have an extensive vocabulary, okay? The readability of this one is at the all-time high. Please say a couple of words.
I enjoyed working at St. Petersburg College. I have many, many memories, friends, and I miss those that left us, but I still have them in my mind, and I thank all of you very, very much. Thank you.
Here, here. (applause).
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, we do, and I'd like to ask Frances New to, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on a quarterly basis, I've invited a donor to the college to come and just receive our thanks and a little bit of recognition, so that we can start highlighting the many friends that we have and the people who've made donations. So through Frances's good effort, we have identified the first of such recognitions. Frances, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and President Law. It gives me great pleasure this morning to recognize Transamerica, formerly Aegon of St. Petersburg. Over the past year, Transamerica has contributed $22,500 to the foundation to support women on the way, men achieving excellence, and the foundation's Innovation Grants Initiative, and that's a grant program for faculty and staff. Representing Aegon, excuse me, representing Transamerica this morning is Mr. Stephen Shepherd. Steve is the Vice President and General Counsel for Transamerica subsidiary, Western Reserve Life. It is under Steve's outstanding leadership that the relationship between the foundation and Transamerica has been established, and I'm so pleased to announce that this past May, Mr. Shepherd joined the foundation Board of Directors. So now I'm very pleased to introduce to you Mr. Stephen Shepherd.
Good morning, and thank you very much for having me here today. We at Transamerica are very pleased to be partnering with St. Petersburg College. As an employer of 1,000 people in Pinellas County, we recognize that it's in our interest to support the education of our future workforce. We've been doing that for quite some time on the K-12 side, and I frankly am not sure why it's taken us so long to create this kind of relationship with St. Petersburg College, but we're very glad to now be working with you, and we look forward to a long and rewarding relationship. Thank you for having me today.
Mr. Chairman, we have a little token of our thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Transamerica. We really appreciate all you do in our community, and we especially appreciate you helping Women on the Way, which is a program that helps a lot of young women make it through college here at St. Petersburg College. We are really proud of that program, and we really appreciate you helping. And of course, with Frances, who wouldn't want to help, she does such a good job, and we appreciate all you do as well, Frances. Any other board members have any comments?
None for me, thank you.
I think we have to take up the preliminary matters. If I hear a motion for the adoption of the resolution, then also.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to the next item. Comments? Any board members have any comments?
No, they do not.
Do not? Okay. I don't have any either. Oh, yes I do, yes I do, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Dr. Law and I attended ACCT in Boston, and of course, as usual, it was a very good meeting, but we couldn't get good seats because Ken Burke wasn't there.[516.01][516.01](laughing). Ken's always early to everything. But no, it was a very good annual conference, very informative. There's a lot of things going on at the federal level, as well as things that ACCT is involved in. I'll tell you, the luncheon speaker, Byron Pitts from 60 Minutes, spoke about his life story, and the young lady, Pilar, who he has been mentoring, and I'll tell you, it was one of the most moving experiences that I've had in a very long time, very informative about where do we go when life's too hard? That's what the young lady used to ask him all the time, and he said that the community colleges is where you go when life's too hard. The people on the community college concept have been able to help her move through life, a young lady who couldn't read until she was 12 or 13 years old. So it was a very good conference. We, of course, shared with a lot of folks, got to meet some folks from Daytona State College, who stole Dr. Kate Berniston, and I told them we weren't happy about it. But it was a very good time, very good experience, and I would entreat all of board members next time, if you can make it to, to actually attend, if you could. Any board members have any comments whatsoever?
No, it's getting lonely up here.
Yeah, it's starting to get real lonely. Florida State lost, so I figured he broke down.[608.29][608.29](laughing). So we'll move right to the President.
Mr. Chairman, a short list. I think this venue is probably the appropriate spot to confirm that Mr. North tendered his resignation to the board. He sent a very generous letter indicating that his business concerns did not afford him the opportunity to be with us. For completeness, members of the board, please beware that the Chairman and I are, as we speak, clearing our calendar to go to Tallahassee to meet with the Chief of Staff to see if we can't get final resolution. We need a full complement of board members, we need people who can represent our community, take the good things that we're doing and help add to that. So that will happen with, certainly before the next board meeting.
Yeah.
In fact, I think we're working on a date. That's one. Moving, my week was, despite being with Devron in beautiful 48-degree morning run in Boston, but between our last meeting and today, our good friend and colleague, Dennis Jones, tendered his resignation effective January 4th, 2013. Dennis has been with the college almost six years, but that doesn't describe his relation to us, which goes back decades. And Dennis is not with us today, but he and I had a quiet moment in our office. As some of you know, I was the staff director in the legislature when Dennis got his first committee assignment, so Dennis and I know each other from way back. We will certainly take time to recognize Dennis's contribution with, before we let him get out of here for the holiday break, and I will be meeting with my staff to talk about how we might best rearrange duties and responsibilities in response to that. Let me, I think we indicated to you, and I'm delighted to announce, that Chancellor Randy Hanna has selected Dr. Martha Campbell, and I think she would very closely tell you her good friend, Dr. Sharon Griggs, for My Bridge to Success Program as recipients of the Chancellor's Leadership Award for Best Practices. And Martha, and I see Sharon, where's Martha? She's.
She's.
It's rare that they get that far apart, okay?[774.82][774.82](applause). And these two extraordinary educators have continued to drive forward efforts to solve our toughest issue, that of remedial education. They do many things well, but they have adopted that issue as their cause and are making huge progress with that. They will be part of a meeting that we are hosting for the entire state, October 28th, do I have the dates right? And they will be on panels for that. This is very nice recognition for very good work. I did want to point out to you, and I'll pass this along, I thought I had copies, but our Policy Institute held a workshop on October 4th regarding the constitutional amendments, and I am advised that the crowd was an overflow crowd. We actually had to open an adjoining meeting room and beam the program in. So the estimate is somewhere between 250 and 300 people showed up for our workshop on what the constitutional amendments mean. It is exactly what I would hope a college policy institute does in service to its community. So I'm very pleased for David Clemmenson, that work. And then, gentlemen, you have hot off the press, I saw them deliver it yesterday at 5:30, the first programs for All College Day, which is October 23rd, come for as much or as little as you're able to squeeze in. If you, if you just come to the Clearwater Campus and stroll around, you'll catch the fever, though. It's a wonderful ambiance, you see an extensive range of development opportunities, and they jump between personal, professional development, a lot of focus on mission-related activities that we're doing, the follow-through on our 5x180 plan. So it's a full day, very, very enthusiastic response for all staff. Please come, there's, you know, we can always accommodate you on lunch, but move around, don't sit in one meeting, go see a whole cross-section. I will have another item at the end during the President's actual report, Devron, Mr. Chairman, okay?
Okay. There's a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, September 18th.
So.
It's been moved in second, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing will have accepted the minutes from last month. Monthly reports, Mr. Lang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no formal report, however, with the Chairman's permission. My youngest son, Jim, was born approximately 29 years ago, and during that entire time of his life, I've been involved with the college. I think when he was young, he thought I lived here. Today, in any event, Jim is with us, and I'm very, very proud of him, I'd like for him to stand.
Sure. Stand.
There he is. Oh, he's walking.
Well, he's so kind.[972.61][972.61](applause).
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no problem. I'm sure he knows the proper university to send his kids to.
Uh, go Gator.
Oh, that's right, thanks.[983.51][983.51](laughing).
When he gets to the microphone, would you just clarify that? I have evidence to the contrary.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Ms. Carter, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You have a report this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a report.
Great.
Board members, I'd like to introduce a new associate in the General Counsel's Office, Brian Miles. Brian, could you stand?
Welcome.
Brian is a West Point graduate with a degree in engineering. He's also served as a captain in the U.S. Army, and he is a graduate of Nova Southeastern Law School. He comes to us from private practice in Clearwater, and we're very happy to welcome him this week. Thank you.
Welcome, Brian. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Suzanne, I just wanted to thank you for the update. Do we get the update on legal matters?
Yes.
That was the first time I received one since I've been on the board, so is that a yearly report, or?
It happens, we'll make it semi-annually is more, those things move a little slower. We usually provide, and I think we just missed the opportunity, we have to provide that guidance as part of our annual audit. The Auditor General looks to see if we have any outstanding exposures.
Right.
And I think that didn't get sent at that point, so you'll get that twice a year.
Twice a year.
Okay? Anytime, if you think more, but the law, those matters move slower.
That's what it is.
All right.
Being updated.
Dr. Vito?
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about the theater program at the college. As you may know, theater has been a part of SPC for many years. In fact, there was a theater club on the campus the very first year that the college was chartered, and throughout its history, there have been a lot of outstanding performances, including some in which the president of the college actually participated. So we encourage Dr. Law to consider that tradition. There'll be opportunities for you.[1119.33][1119.33](laughing). The program underwent about a 10-year hiatus, however. After the budget shortfalls following the attacks of 9/11, the program was suspended for about 10 years, and under Dr. Law's leadership, was brought back last year, along with support from Dr. Steele, our Dean of Fine Arts, and a lot of informal support from people on campus, Mark Bunting, Jimmy Chang, and Susan Demers were very instrumental in bringing that back. The theater program offers enormous opportunities for students. The skills that they gain in theater productions include things like public speaking, critical thinking, teamwork skills, accountability, commitment, a lot of the things that employers are asking us for. Theater has, plays a big part in this community, as do the arts, in terms of economic development. And there are certainly career opportunities for people in theater, as well as enhancing their other opportunities. As you, I'm sure, are aware, we've had at least one President of the United States who had an extensive background in acting, and I'm sure that enhanced his ability in the political arena. Last year was our first year, and we're very pleased to see that we had four really outstanding performances, or productions, 17 performances, actually, all in the timing. Stones from God was performed at our Tarpon Springs campus, Godspell, wonderful music, and the students performed well in all those. This year, we'll have, coming up in October, Wit, the Pulitzer Prize-winning play that we are doing in cooperation with American Stage. It'll be directed by Todd Olson, who is the artistic director and performed at the Palladium. Fool for Love, which will be directed by our own Jimmy Chang. Also, Good Night, Desdemona, and Fools will be our productions for this year. We're really pleased that we had so many participants, not only student participants, but attendees, and encourage you, if you have the opportunity, and many of you have attended the plays, but encourage you to attend those upcoming performances this year. Be pleased to answer any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right along, we'll move to Dr. Susan Demers.
Good morning. I am the Dean of the College of Policy, Ethics, and Legal Studies, and in a way, that makes us a microcosm of the whole college. The centerpiece is the Ethics Course, which is a class that every student at SPC takes, 8,500 students last year alone. And then we have an AS degree, a standard work, two-year workforce degree in paralegal studies, two four-year degrees, one in public policy and administration, that's the college's newest four-year degree, a pretty well-established four-year degree in paralegal studies, and then we also have a post-baccalaureate certificate in paralegal studies. All three of the paralegal programs are approved by the American Bar Association. And what I thought I'd do this morning is just walk you through the academic piece of an internship. You know, sometimes people think internship is just matchmaking. You send the student out, and you find a great employer, and it just happens magically. But it doesn't really work that way. It takes lots of commitment on the part of the people in the community who are willing to take our students. And I wanted to walk you through that, so that if you were recommending an internship, you knew what you were getting folks into. It's a great opportunity for our students, and it's a wonderful opportunity for the right employer. So the student goes to the work site, they sign a learning contract, and it needs to be a learning contract if they're doing it for pay, or if they're doing it without compensation. Department of Labor regs say that if it's without compensation, we have to have specific educational learning objectives. And then, let me move forward on this. There we go. They have to keep job logs hour by hour, and part of that is so that we can see the kind of work that they're doing, so that the next time we have an opportunity, the next student gets a better version of an internship at that company. We do the soft skills of resume work and interview, and then we do a cover letter and their own personal project management, project, the job search, maybe the biggest project management any of us undertake in our lives. And then we deal with ethics and social media. Now, social media is a curse for the workplace, as you probably know. It's a curse for the classroom, and we need to have that discussion with students before they go to the workplace. Talk a lot about other soft skills, like etiquette and basic office skills. We also try and polish up our students, so that they show up at the workplace and do themselves proud, the employer proud, and the college proud. We go back, and even though we're worried about the social media, basic letter writing and basic office communication skills need to get checked out as part of the course. And then we also look at timekeeping and billing, so that they understand that the time that the employer is investing in them is real money out of their pocket, as well as their opportunity to earn money. Another thing that all of us spend our time on is dealing with safety issues before we send a student out. They need to understand that their safety is their responsibility, but that they need to know where they're parking, what time they're walking to their car, who they're spending their time with on the job, so that it's, that the whole experience is a great experience for them. Then, of course, there are other specific issues on a job site, but there's just general safety that any student going to a strange place needs to be talked through. And finally, for a lot of our students, they have background issues. We have a lot of students with arrests, or criminal convictions, or poor work history, and we can't send them out into the community unless we, first of all, inform the employer, but second of all, give them sort of a language set, so that they can discuss it. Because if you lie about that, you're never going back to that place again, and those people will also blackball you from any other place. So you have to deal with background issues upfront, so, and having those difficult conversations is really, really hard for an instructor and a student, but it's much worse in life if it's for real, rather than in an internship setting. And then, finally, this all comes back to the college through a site visit by the core internship coordinator, and then the student does a final reflective piece, trying to pull it all together, so that it isn't just work for the teacher and work for the employer, but there's also a significant piece of academic work on the student's part to try and understand what they learned. And even if things don't go as swimmingly as they expected, they can figure out what went wrong and make it go right the next time. And I should also note that we spend exactly that same amount of reflection time with the employer, so that their next experience can be a good one as well. So with that, I want to encourage you to help us, because, you know, we do a great job in the classroom, but that bridge from theory to practice is a tough one, and nothing fills that gap like an internship does. We love to build, it's in most of our AS degree programs throughout the college, we've added it as a component in our four-year programs, but it takes a job opportunity in order to place a student, so we'd love your assistance with that. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Dr. Demers, is the internship program, is it optional?
It depends on the degree program. In our paralegal program, it is not optional, it's required, and many of the AS degree programs that we take that tack. In the four-year degree program, because our four-year programs are built two plus two on an AS program, it is optional, but strongly encouraged.
And how long is the typical internship?
Well, it's 180 hours is a typical internship. And what that means, it's 60 hours on the work site, plus some classroom hours, so it's 180 hours on the work site. That's 180 hours of the employer's time. That's a substantial amount, but it also keeps a student from being imposed upon by any particular employer, too.
Would you know offhand what percentage is paid versus non-paid?
Well, I can only tell you from my program, a little over half is paid, a little under half is non-paid, but those non-paid, we have a significant number of those that work into jobs, so it's sort of, it's a happy temporary to permanent placement. And I'm very, very pleased to say that in our paralegal program, we've had the opportunity to have students in the U.S. Attorney's Office. Our most recent internship is with the General Counsel for the Veterans Administration for this region, so we have lots of great opportunities, as well as the ones you would expect, like the community law program where they are, it is pro bono service.
You obviously have a lot of partners helping you. Is it a challenge to find the adequate number of internships?
It is always appreciated, a referral for an internship, because it is, I joked about it, it wasn't just matching, but it, matchmaking, but it really is matchmaking to start with, to find the right internship for the right student, just like any other employment challenge, you know? Finding the right fit makes all the difference, so yes, we would take referrals all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Demers. Ms. Phoenix?
Good morning. Nice to see you all, you again. Um, let's see. I came here this morning so I could give you an update and give you a little more information about All College Day 2012, and how the Career Service Employee Council has partnered with professional development in order to offer three sessions during All College Day on the 23rd. I know that Dr. Law handed out the initial pamphlets to you this morning, and three of those sessions belong to us, two of which we're going to use to focus on a product called Focus 2, that students are able to use under my SPC, and we're going to make that available to staff as well, and also to use our Skillport portal site, which is in conjunction with professional development and HR. in conjunction with professional development and HR. Under this, under these two sessions, we're going to provide a lab environment where employees can come in and will assess their interests, skills, and values, and their personality styles through these exercises. And in so doing, we'll hope to identify occupations or personal interests that suit the employees so that they'll be able to match those results with SPC majors and courses in order to increase and develop professionally and personally here at the college. The idea is that budgeted faculty and staff are one of our biggest resources, and if we are, if we're able to provide them with ways to identify and grow personally, will also grow the success of the college. So All College Day is going to have over two hundred sessions that we'll provide throughout the day, and there are some of the themes will include achieving the dream, the college experience, and then we'll focus a lot on student success as well. There's internal and external presenters, and then we'll have a keynote by Dr. Law. So I think that the employees will have a great opportunity to pick and choose what it is that they want to look at and where they want to go, and we're hoping that these sessions that we're offering will build off of that and give the employees an even deeper understanding of the fact that St. Petersburg College is supporting their personal growth. In conjunction with that, we also had a SWOT analysis, which I've mentioned before, last year, which identified certain strengths and weaknesses within the career service staff. And what we identified through last year's session was that career pathing is a very high priority for employees, and it's on their minds, it's something they want to do. We identified a need for comprehensive training plans that are easily accessible by the employees, and that there's a desire to build on professional development, and that they'd like to create or have an awareness and an opportunity through collaboration with Human Resources to develop those skills. So hopefully, by just offering these sessions, we'll be able to encourage employees to investigate what their interests might be, and then find a way to place them and get them working on those options. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're moving on to old business. Dr. Law?
We have probably each month, the last three or four months, addressed the issue of Midtown, and with the good guidance of the board, I, Dr. Duncan and I did make individual appointments and met with all of you, so we are going to, I think, put a bow on today. We got good feedback from everybody at those meetings on the finance plan. I'd like to do two things. One is to respond to some of the questions that we had last night. We won't spend a lot of time because we didn't meet individually, but I think for the benefit of everyone, for the comprehensiveness, and I've asked Dr. Gordon to just talk about, as we went back, the need analysis looks pretty good to me, and then Dr. Duncan can just briefly tee up the financial model that we put together, and I think everybody then, Mr. Chairman, would be ready to vote. That's my hope.
Okay. Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Law. Before the actual meet of the presentation, we're going to go through some demographic-type information. The first slide that you see here is a kind of a population matrix, and it kind of aligns with where our campuses are. And if you look to where the St. Pete Midtown area is, you see you have a population that ranges from about four thousand to twelve thousand. Next slide shows the actual market penetration of the college in terms of how we are, what percentage of students we're actually attracting in the areas that we're attracting them from. And you'll see that primarily in most of the areas where we have campuses, we've got pretty decent penetration, which is from twelve to sixteen percent. However, when you look over in the Midtown area, you see that market penetration is about the eight to twelve percent. And one of the reasons for that, which we pointed out earlier, is that that campus is maxed out in terms of the number of students that it can serve. So for us to be able to build that penetration, the new facility would allow us to do that. Next slide shows where students live and that take credit, or receiving credits from Midtown. And you can see from this particular slide that they're kind of spread out all over the place, but what's interesting is that when you look in the general area where Midtown would be, that we're not really capturing a whole lot of credits from that area. And that's one of our primary objectives with this project, is to be able to capitalize on the population that we have there and be able to have more students in that particular area taking classes there and earning credits. This slide here shows the enrollment trend over the years for all of St. Pete College, and you see that it has a steady trend that's been going upward for the last twelve years, and this is enrollment based on student semester hours. Next slide shows our e-campus enrollment, and that has had a very, very steep incline going up to 2006 and then kind of tapering off with 2007, 2008. This is a comparison of the St. Pete Gibbs enrollment trend versus the downtown enrollment trend, and the key here is to show that the downtown enrollment has experienced a substantial increase in enrollment over the years, however, not really impacting the St. Pete Gibbs in terms of pulling away from that campus's enrollment. It has kind of held its own in that regard. As we look at the downtown and Midtown comparison, you see the same thing. Midtown is holding its own, showing steady growth, and downtown is doing the same. None of them are competing against each other, and we expect that to be the same thing as we put in the new campus. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, let me see if I can summarize that. We, our analysis shows the area to be served still is one of the richest fifteen to thirty-five year-old areas in the county. The level of penetration from our campuses is among the lowest, despite the fact that it's one of the target areas where we would think we'd have a higher one. The opening of campuses themselves do not cannibalize, the wild card having been the growth of the e-campus as opposed to anything else. So we continue to think that viewing our approach for downtown Midtown as serving that quadrant of our community still has enormous positive forward potential, certainly well within an acceptable range of financial exposure or risk.
Thank you. I'm going to pull up a live spreadsheet here for you to look at. Good morning.
Good morning.
Of course, we use that demographic information and enrollment information to try to trend out some data to help prepare a financial plan. We also factored in a number of variables in looking at the financial plan. One was potential increases in tuition, general revenue increases. We also, you see up here, a credit load average. Right now, I've got it set at six. I believe last month, we mentioned that the current course load, I believe, is four at Midtown, and it's pretty well maxed out there. We expect that at a minimum, it would probably go to at least six and possibly as high as eight or nine. I believe the average right now between Midtown and Downtown is nine credit hours, when you look at the total enrollment of those two areas. In projecting costs, we took, for direct instruction, we tied that directly to projected student semester hours, and used a ratio of fifty-five percent full-time and forty-five percent adjunct instruction and calculating those costs. For the other expense projections, we pretty much used the state cost analysis data, which the percentages that you're seeing there for academic support, student services are what the aggregate percentages that we report to the state.
Doug may have, his come to, those are the numbers we report to the state. Those aren't the statewide averages. Those are our numbers as reported to the state.
Right, sorry. Right. So we took that information then, and we first looked at revenue. One of the things I have highlighted here that is very significant to the financial analysis for Midtown is that for that building, we expect to receive about $328,000 in operating costs for new facilities. And since I've been here, we've received that on every facility that we've built or opened, and I expect that to continue. It is a high priority item. We then expect to contribute in thirteen and fourteen, about another $300,000 of general revenue, for a total of about $629,000 of revenue. This general revenue contribution is simply based on the percentage of the SSH of Midtown against the whole college, so that would be the percent of our general revenue that they would receive. On the tuition and fee projection, that consists of two things. It consists of the SSH projection, which is a direct factor of the course, the credit load average. So if I change this number up here, and if that number increases, then that tuition number will increase. Right now, I've got the tuition fee rates at zero increases over that time, so it doesn't show any, it's only showing you an increase based on the credit load number. When you then, that gives us your, our total estimated revenue, and for, on the expense side, the numbers that you're looking at are, I mentioned the direct instruction number is based on that fifty-five, forty-five full-time adjunct ratio against the SSH. And then the, these are the numbers that compare to the percentages that I showed you from our cost analysis. When you put that together, we're showing right now a minimal surplus, about a hundred and thirty thousand the first year, and it escalates a little. Of course, if there are tuition increases, if the enrollment goes, right now, this is factored at three percent increase in enrollment over those years, which is the average that our college has grown over the last fifteen years. And we believe it could actually be higher than that, but, so I think it's a little bit conservative at this point. But based on this projection, we see a lot of opportunity at Midtown. We think the financial numbers are sound and really can only get better, assuming some of the projections turn out being a little bit higher than what we've conservatively projected here, so. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just the, how we're going to pay for it. If you want to go, can you go through that, or is that coming up?
That's the next item, that's the decision item.
I have a quick question. Dr. Duncan, the three percent increase has been the average over the years for the college, but what has been the actual growth of Midtown's campus that we have currently?
Can you, if we flip back, I think, believe that last slide, it didn't give you percentages, but you can see the growth, with the exception of that one year, and I believe when we were talking, there was some discussion about possibly closing Midtown. You see that drop, but you see, what, fifteen, twenty?
Last five years is thirty-one hundred to fifty-five hundred, so that's double-digit for sure at Midtown.
Yeah, and at the same time, you see downtown growing, so you don't necessarily see Midtown detracting from that.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we could not make a more conservative financial projection. No tuition increase, modest growth, you know, I mean...
I just wanted to make sure that we get the actual facts out there. Three percent is average in Midtown, that living growing above the average increase.
Okay. Okay, the second part to this is to take a look at the actual finance and construction plan for the project. You may recall back, I believe it was the February meeting, we brought to you the, a finance plan where we would fund it from our own fund balance, and I believe at that time, you authorized us to move money over into the capital outlay fund for that purpose. We anticipate, we actually moved over roughly nineteen million dollars, and we would be using about fourteen million of it for this project. What I've laid out here is to show that we would, as described at the February meeting, we would create a direct support organization who would serve as the oversight of the construction, and then we would loan, we would donate about ten million to the project, which is for the construction costs, then the other four million would be a loan to the, to the direct support organization at about 1.6% interest, and I'll explain a little bit what that does for us. There is a statute that allows us to use capital improvement fees for seven-year lease purchase arrangements. So once this building is built, we would then lease it back from the direct support organization, and they would pay us back the four million, and I'll show you, just talk about the actual funding of that in just a second. What I want to show you is first, what that does for our, from our capital improvement fee perspective. These are the numbers, I showed these to you last month, of our total projected capital improvement fees that we would collect over that period. This would be the lease purchase payments to the direct support organization over that period, and again, the first and last year are half-years. The next shows you our total, over those, that same period of time, those payments plus our bond payments that we already have. So that, the next slide shows you our total payments using our capital improvement fees, and then it shows you the balance over that, the life of the seven-year lease. So we expect to be, taking this approach, we expect to be pretty healthy from a, from having additional funds to handle maintenance and other capital outlay needs. If you look down at the bottom, following the construction, the fourteen million, we expect to start the thirteen, fourteen year with, you can see eight point nine million is over in the left, in the left column at the bottom, under thirteen, fourteen, is eight point nine million. That's where we will be in terms of cash left over. This is after the Midtown building has been built. And then shows you then over the next seven years, between interest and payments back from the DSO to us for the four million dollar loan, what we, the additional money that we expect to accumulate for other projects.
Okay.
So it's just to give you an idea that we're not spending all of our money on Midtown. There will be a balance, and then we will grow that for other needs, be it the...
Such as the Clearwater Library.
The Clearwater Library.
That's exactly what we'll do.
Whichever.
Which, by the way, we need to put on a fast track.
Next month, we're taking one project at a time, Mr. Chairman. Let me see if I can, again, just be sure we're clear here. Totally self-financed by ourselves, by the college. The direct support organization, the DSO, is a vehicle to allow us to come within the seven-year timeframe for the project. It allows us to lend money essentially to a closely-held third-party organization and pay ourselves back a slight interest rate. The money then is available for repayment. It is in line with exactly what we showed you in February. This is the plan we had started with. Thank you for your patience in letting me walk it around the block a couple of times, but I think prudence says, let's go ahead and move forward. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is my recommendation.
Do any board members have any comments or questions?
Good job this past month.
Thank you.
Let me commend Doug and Dr. Law, Dr. Gordon, and any other folks that have worked on this. Behind the scenes, Dr. Law has met with officials from the city, Louis Moore, who I think a lot of you heard me talk about. I think that Dr. Law found that to be very beneficial, Louis Moore, because I think, I went back and listened to myself on the, in the last meeting, and I think I confused some folks. Louis Moore is the purchasing director for the city, but in being the purchasing director, he has accumulated so much information that I think is very helpful for us to write RFPs and other things when we're talking about the Midtown area, because he has been kind of the expert on that area to make sure that there's minority participation, that we write it well enough to make sure that folks can, will have enough minority participation, and they evaluate how much minority participation can actually be on a project, that they think you can get out of that project, to make sure that folks within the community also have an opportunity to bid on some of the jobs and some of the work and other things. So, but I want to commend... So, but I want to commend you all. It's been a tough one. We've been going around and around trying to figure out what the right way was. I mean, because we do have other needs on other campuses, and we cannot overlook those as well. So, Dr. Law, you guys should be commended on that. We may have taken a while to get to this point, but, but it was the right thing to do, to have those exercises and conversations to make sure that we not only, make sure that Midtown can get built, but to accommodate all of our students. That's what we're here for, and not just here for Midtown or Downtown. We got to make sure that we can accommodate the needs of all of our campuses and all of our students, and I think we've gotten to that point. We may have, you know, it's like going shopping. Sometimes you start out in Macy's, you go down and visit other stores, but you end up back in Macy's, because, and that's what we've done here essentially, but I believe it is the right thing to have done so that we had a discussion. So, you guys should be commended on a good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one of, in going around, meeting with board members, I think a constructive criticism was to be sure that we outline a little more clearly the, the timing of the project. I think, Mr. Brett, we had this discussion in your office, and you'll see, we have included in this memorandum what will come back to you on what schedule, and I hope that's a step in the right direction for your understanding of how this will work best.
Go ahead, Mr. Brett.
I'd like to move approval of 6A2 with some discussion, please.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Now, Mr. Brett, before you start, let me ask Dr. Law a quick question. Once we approve this, we, you and I have talked about having community folks actually review, or be the review team of what, who we use for a construction project.
Yes.
Is it, should we wait till next month to have the board members come back with names to you of those three individuals, I guess now, from the community that will review those?
Thank you.
So, would that be next month?
If you look, it will, the recommendation will come back to you in January. I think step one is for this board to say, this is the design, this is the scope of the project. Step two, then, would be for us to put it on the street to work on that, and that's where we could take input as to how we get there. In January, with that input, I'll make a recommendation to you. That's how I think you and I discussed the plan.
Yes. Okay, so next month, board members should be prepared to give you the names of the individuals that they would like to sit on that particular committee to make recommendation to you, and then you'll come back to us.
We can work that, yes.
So, that's not confusing to anybody, right? Mr. Brett? I'm sorry.
No problem. And that was one of the items that I wanted to speak to. And I might be a little ahead of the game, but I want to make these thoughts known now. And that is, the first point, thank you for all the work. This is great. I would like for us to make our best effort within the constraints of the law to try to have a local general contractor. And when I say local, I know there's only a few on the list who can take on a project of this size, but I've spent a lot of time trying to make sure that economic development that we are doing helps the folks who are in our area. And so, to the extent that it's possible, I would hope that the committee could pay extra attention to trying to recruit and to have a local contractor do this job. And part of that selection process also, that I would like for the selection committee to incorporate into the criteria, would be to have a required percentage, perhaps 30% be minority subcontractors. And I believe we have an opportunity here to reach out to the Midtown community to try to secure a lot of those subcontractors. I think this is, this is part of this process. So, and again, we'll have to rely on counsel to advise us as to what we can legally request and require of our general contractor, but I think requiring whatever the norm is, and I believe it may be 30% of minority participation as subs in this project, would be a goal for us to, to try to achieve. And the chairman mentioned already, you're a little ahead of me on this, of having board members appoint some representatives to that committee, but my thought was that I felt that we needed to look to the Midtown community, as we did during all of our charrettes, in gathering input from the community, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the community. And so, I would hope that whatever the final composition of our, our review and selection committee is, is that there will be a certain number of members from perhaps the Midtown community who could help us on that process. So, I might be a little bit ahead on that, but I wanted to make those thoughts known The other item I wanted to talk about, Dr. Law, I mentioned to you briefly in our private meeting, and that is us keeping current with our knowledge as board members as to how the selection process is going. I think I shared with you one of my concerns earlier on about us approving the architect for this project, like, two months after the architect had already started working on it, and I felt like we were a little bit behind the curve on that, and so I, I hope that from this point going forward, that we will be current with the information as it's happening, kind of like real-time, to the extent that that's possible. And I, and I know that's, I know that's, it's very difficult when we meet once a month, but to the extent that that's possible, perhaps even keeping us advised outside of meetings individually. So, those are, those are the points that I wanted to make.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Those are phenomenal. I totally, wholeheartedly agree with you, Mr. Brett. And if people don't know, Mr. Brett has been working for over 30 years with the chamber trying to make sure that the local folks, that those dollars generate and turn over locally for a very long time, and it was a very part of the redevelopment of Downtown. So, thank you for those comments. I think we're right on, on target. But I will say, Dr. Law, if Mr. Brett has those concerns about, we can add that to our process. I think the committee can do that. And we were looking to have four people, and if Mr. Fine does not disagree, we were going to have four people on that committee. Maybe we have Mr. Brett chair that committee for those maybe one or two meetings. I am comfortable with that. I'm fine with that, and then they can come back to you with a very good process. And then we have representation from the board, actually, on that particular committee, if Mr. Brett's okay with that.
Chairing the selection committee?
For, yes.
No, I, I'm not sure that's the right role as a board member.
I think since it has to come back for a vote, that might not be the best place to be. Participation is one thing, but sharing it would be something else.
But we will have the three people.
We can work through, we know the sentiment of that.
And I do agree, those folks should probably be folks that are familiar or work with Midtown a lot, so. Mr. Fine?
No.
Nothing?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, let me just put a bow on it, okay? Thank you for the input. We're in enormous agreement that we're going to do this. By the way, all of the things you're asking, either we do them all or we do none of it. So, it fits together very nicely. The way to get the best general contractor is to make a commitment to local subs first, and then the general contractors can demonstrate their relationship with subs, and then the whole thing hangs together very well. And then, Mr. Brett, let me just be sure, the grid here is mostly for staff benefit, not for board benefit, so the staff knows when we're taking items to the board and how all of the decisions can be real-time. So, I'm trying to get everybody on the same page. So, your guidance is very well-received. Thank you.
Well, if there's nothing else, we have to make a motion and vote on funding this ourselves, and then, and I think we should even vote on the process that is before us so that Dr. Law has that laid out and we can move forward.
And that construction plan is the agenda item. It's a financial and construction plan, so it's in there.
Is there a motion?
We've already made it.
Oh, I'm sorry, in a second. There's been a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposing, we have accepted to move forward on the Midtown project.
Great, great.
It's a long time coming.
Thank you.
And thank you, board members. You have been very patient. The new business items, we have none on the student success, bidding expenditures, do we have anything, Dr. Law?
No, that's the normal quarterly report.
Information project.
It's information.
Well, if that's the case, we could probably take up A, B, C, and D altogether, right?
That's correct.
Is there a motion to take?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any reports, you want to take these action reports, or you just want to go ahead and vote on? Is there any reports, Dr. Law, on item D, that anybody's interested in?
No, those are.
Okay. So, we have a motion to accept the, in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then opposing, we're on the capital outlay. There's a couple of information items on the capital outlay, Dr. Law?
That is, again, the, just a standard quarterly report. Your focus goes to the next action item, so, Mr. Chairman, at the right time, we'll move to item E2.
Yep, the construction documents.
And we should have some familiar faces here. Well, do not bring all of those.
Wow.
No, 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 those are not allowed at the podium. Those are not allowed at the podium.
We're here to present the 100% construction documents. You see the memo in your board packet. These are all drawings that you have seen in the past, and we are ready to get going with construction. The areas that we're, that we're working on are basically two areas of the campus. The first is in our library. As you know, on the second floor, we've had shelled-out space there for some time that we're, we're planning to build out. The, the areas specifically that we're looking to construct are office for our dean, science dean, Dean Chapin. Finally, the offices for the Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions, some faculty offices, some adjunct office space, and our SEAL Center, Center for Engagement, Teaching, and Learning. We're excited about that as a space where we can engage our faculty and they can work to improve teaching and learning, and then our instructional technologists. Probably the showcase space in this particular area is our multi-classroom that's going to seat about 75 people, and we see this as, as part of our trilogy of our events center, the Digitarium, the conference center, and then this multipurpose classroom. The second area that we're building out is in the, and enhancing is in the TL building, our original building. Two major areas in here, one that we're particularly excited about is our science labs. As this board knows, for some time, we've needed to have additional science labs to be able to offer especially microbiology and chemistry. This lab will be able to allow us to offer both of those classes and then have a complimentary science classroom and a prep room. We also expect to enhance our learning commons. As you know, one of our major thrust institutionally is to improve out-of-class support. We see this as being able to take us a major leap forward in that area. We're going to expand our learning support in the patio, we can glass in that patio area that is now outside. We're going to add specifically a math studio, a math lab, and a writing studio, and then we're going to be adding some additional furniture and fixtures along with some additional faculty offices. So, that's a very quick overview. Of course, the folks from facilities have done outstanding job on that. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for members?
Looks great.
Looks good.
Thanks. We're ready to get going. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Law, any comments before we move on? Take up item E, I guess F and G? A motion to take those up? We didn't do E in the last one. E, 1, 2, 3, F and G.
Mr. Chairman, when you get the votes, we should probably just go to the votes. I want to, I don't want to go past the health insurance too.
No, no, I was just saying, take up G, so we can have those reports. You just want to go to F and then take G up?
I think we need a vote on two E, okay?
We need, I think we need on E and F.
E and F, okay, all right.
Even though there's none.
Second.
There's been a motion to take up E and F, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No discussion, and we're moving on to G, administrative.
Mr. Chairman, the personnel report is nothing special in that this month, the normal range of things, and then I'd like to direct your focus to the health insurance. Okay, and again, this is the decision item. Am I making this presentation, or?
I can't, I was wondering. Bye. We're bringing back to you, this is not...
Yeah. Got upset two nights, two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, well, got upset. Two weeks ago, they lost.
We brought to you last month, recommendation to have a deductible plan for employees. As you recall, we considered across the board increases, as we've been doing for several years. Going to this model, we believe will bring a new dynamic to our program, offer our employees an opportunity to be partners to help us address the continued increase of claims over time. We, our claims, you may recall, thank you, have been in excess of $1 million a month. So, we are, we are continuing to recommend to you, we go to this deductible model based on the different plans that our employees have. We are also recommending no increase in the biweekly premium for employees whose pay is more than $35,000. No increase in co-pays for medical or dental services, but for those at the, at the lower end of our conference compensation plan, we are recommending that we give them a little bit of a break and that we reduce their biweekly premiums for their insurance. And when we're talking about this, we're talking about those who are on the Aetna Select and the POS 2, which is the PPO-type plan. We're not talking about those on the HSA plan. These are on the more traditional plans. If you note in your board memo, the next, the nearly last paragraph in the board memo, for those employees, that will be a reduction of $7.11 per pay and $170.64 annually. No change in dental insurance, no change in our plan benefit levels, no change in co-pays, no change in our networks. We are, we have a very solid network with Aetna that has remained stable and is a good partner for St. Petersburg College. We are suggesting no changes in our high-deductible, low-premium plan with a health savings account. We did pilot that last year. We are hoping for people to continue in the plan and to perhaps have more people move to the HSA plan this coming year. The flexible spending account, and I want to take a minute on this, because this has been an area of confusion. We are recommending the flexible spending account option for employees as a means to deal with the change of going to the deductible. We are not requiring employees to go to the flexible spending account option. We did have meetings on our campuses with employees to help explain this, but I, but I've been hearing a feedback, and I thought I merited mentioning, to you, that the plan does not include requiring that they do that, but that they consider using an FSA. And the reason is, once you put money into an FSA one time, let's say it's $10 for 24, you've put up $10, they have full access to all that money to help them with the potential risk of exposure with the deductible. Good news, some of our voluntary coverage we have, Lincoln Financial offers our short-term and long-term disability to our employees. That will be dropping, and Allstate offers an optional growth accident insurance indemnity plan that also will be going down. Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think that has, is in the form of an action item.
It is in the form of action. We have to take up item G.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then opposing, we're moving on to the finance report. Dr. Duncan.
Thank you. Very quickly, again, still early in the year, you can see...
Thank you. Very quickly, again, still early in the year, you can see those, the first couple of months here, first three months, that our, our revenue is down a little bit, trending down because of our, our drop in enrollment. You also notice a slight reduction in our overall expenses, and we're, and we're going to be watching that very closely to make sure that we, we keep in line with any further revenue reductions. This is our, just our month-over-month information. I highlighted a few key issues in there. Right now, as I said, student fees are about two point six percent below where we projected they would be. Our total revenue down about one point nine percent. Our personnel expense, although you see some various ups and downs with, within the total numbers, where I've highlighted the twenty-three percent year-to-date as a percent of budget, we're right where we expected to be in overall personnel expense. So, there's a zero percent difference there. We have seen a little increase in the, on the health insurance side because we did budget more in the plan this year, but we've also seen a corresponding decrease in adjunct instruction, again, attributable to, to the enrollment decrease. The current expense is below the year-to-date projection, also by about two point six percent. And, but overall, our budget, our overall operating expense is just about right where we expected to be year-to-date. We right now have a nine point one million dollar year-to-date surplus going into October. At the, at the end of November, we had a nine point one percent, or nine point one million dollar surplus. Questions?
No.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Do you have anything, Dr. Law?
No, sir.
Do this, open the, the board of trustees rules. There's none.
None, right.
We can take all of them up at the same time. Here, I'm going to open the, the board of trust, propose changes to the board of trustees. Are there any public speakers? None, I'll close that meeting. And then we'll, we can take up item I.
I move approval of the audits for the foundation, alumni association, and Liper Ratner.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, we're on to the president's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I, I am passing to you the first draft of the memorandum of understanding that we have developed with our partners at the City of Clearwater. This will be the, the first cut of the eventual agreement to use, have a joint-use library on our Clearwater campus through the good offices of Mayor George Criticos and the very good work by Provost Dan Vito. That board is, is moving forward. So, having resolved the Midtown project today, next month, we will bring an overview of all of the discussions to date regarding where we are with City of Clearwater, the nature of the library. We'll try to, again, Mr. Brett, respond to your request that we, we start all together at the same place. Where are we on this project? What are we trying to accomplish? What are the frameworks for that accomplishment? And where we go on a timeframe? It's, it's ready to move, but there is no, we don't have quite the same urgency that we had on Midtown. Midtown, if, your, your action today allows us to open that a year from next, next summer. This one, we have a little bit of time as we work through it, okay? Clearwater will be bringing some money to the table, so we're, the finance there will be pretty straightforward, but we think we can afford this project.
Will, will the City of Clearwater help with, do it have with operations?
We'll work on all those pieces, but they've been, they understand how this works. They will help us with the, with the construction cost, and then we'll have an operating agreement with them. We've had two, Mr. Chairman, I want to be careful. We have, if we do, we have a different agreement with City of Seminole than we have with City of St. Pete and some others. We're, we're learning as we go, but we'll have an appropriate operating agreement with them on the operating costs.
Perfect.
Okay, I just want you to hear, the City of Clearwater put it on their agenda last Thursday, and I, I simply didn't want to get this in front of the Midtown project.
Thank Mayor Criticos for us. He's, he's doing a good job. Any questions, board members?
Nope.
That's it for your report?
Yes, sir.
Any future agenda items? None? Our next meeting date is November twentieth at the epicenter. This meeting is adjourned?
Now we have to, we have to.
Take up the other one.
Right.
Starla.
Here she comes.
Starla Metz.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Trustees, members, and Dr. Law. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning to submit the Collegiate High School audit for your approval. Do you have any questions for me?
Any board members have any questions?
Screen art.
It's easy.
I think the, probably a motion to accept would be correct.
Yep. Ms. Metz, go ahead. So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, we have accepted the audit for the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School. Ms. Metz, thank you for a great job as usual.
Thank you. I appreciate your approval. And I will then submit this to Penous County Schools and the state as part of our recording and reporting requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Close this one.
Let the record show, it's nine fifty, okay?
That's what I'm talking about.
See you next month.